All right.
People should see it.
We'll get started. I call this meeting of the Windsor School Board to order.
Recording in progress.
Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. We have our student representative and we are missing one of our four members. That could be her. So we're missing. And we have four of us in session today. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
There are not this evening.
And did you, did our IT person let our Zoomers know that? Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, at this time, we will enter into the public comments section. If there are any public comments in the room or online, we will take those.
Oh, Catherine is attending remotely.
Okay, so we do have five.
All right. There are no Zoom comments.
We'll go ahead and close the public comments section and move on to our reports, starting with the superintendent report.
Actually, we didn't schedule any reports for tonight, unless you have a report.
Well, I would, yeah, we'll move on to the chair report. I was just going to share. I just wanted to say thank you to Megan and Emily, Megan White, Emily Porton, and Sue Fossett, who've helped me field some questions from the community regarding those who may have financial hardships, students in particular. And so they gave me some really great information. I was able to answer this community member's question. So I wanted to give appreciation to them.
Emily, Megan, and who?
Porton.
Yep, and who's it?
Sue Fossett.
Thank you.
I did attend the staff appreciation last night, last afternoon. I thought was nice. And attended the eighth grade promotion today. They had a really nice ceremony. I was touched by, I forget our teacher's name, but her speech was really nice. She talked about the country road song and then kind of comparing it to Ramblin' Road and then how the kids always come back home. So it was very touching. I appreciate that. And that's it for my chair report. Moving on to, we have no community reports and no administrative reports. So we'll open up our whole business, starting with our budget discussion.
Okay, I sent information out to all of you. And I guess I'm, I'm, want to go through real quickly what the requests were. I made, I can't put my hand on it. The recommendation to cut about $90,000. And that was primarily, what I, what we did there, we talked about this administrative team, was one of the things that was actually suggested by the administrative team when we met before. And what we did was we took a look at the positions that we added. And you can't do this as you're forming the budget because you don't hire people until usually after the budget is approved. So you can't make the adjustments in the approved agenda, I mean, approved budget, until after that's done. So now that we basically hired pretty much all of our new staff, which is great. We've had lots of applications and we've been able to conduct interviews. And that's where Jolene is tonight. She's doing some interviews for the grade school. But we could take actual numbers, and I sent those to you, of people who are retiring or leaving. And I wrote confidential on that sheet because it does have their names on it. So that really should just be kept with the board. And the difference between what the people who are leaving are making and what the people who are coming in, what the savings is there. And then did the same, exact same thing. Our administrative assistant is leaving special education. And we looked at the difference between her and the person who's taken her place. And that number is in there, it's eight thousand something. And then lastly, asked Josh to take a look at transportation, based on feedback from the board. And had identified $10,000 of savings there. And so 71, 941 from Article One, basically. Eight thousand, 73 from Article Two, and 10,000 from Article Eight. For, that brings our budget-to-budget comparison down to, excuse me, 5.61. And then when you look at the impact on the local taxpayers, it goes from, it was 4.90 down to 3.70. So 1.2% reduction with that amount of money. So I want to just take a second to say, I don't think we've spent enough time sort of looking at how hard the administrative team has worked in putting this budget together because the total impact of the taxpayers with these cuts is $284,880. And we had our Article One line with the negotiations. Negotiations is over $250,000 all by itself. And then probably with the three teachers that were added into that line, that's about $200,000. So we had over $450,000 in Article One. And the actual increase that's being requested now is $151,000. So we did a lot of work to, to, you know, look at things and make cuts and decisions without cutting any other positions. So, and I did mention in our meeting last week that we were considering a position and you guys made it crystal clear that you did not want to look at any of those cuts of those three teachers. So we haven't made those cuts and we've reached the goal that was sort of the soft goal that was set for us. We've got some communication. By the way, if you don't know, this is Bruce Burns. He's the vice chair of the town council. And I've had communication as a chair with you last week with Mr. Burns and with Shannon, who happens to be on the Zoom. So we have two representatives of the council here and I appreciate that. So I appreciate that. So I also sent out, per your request, comparison with bus contracts. I sent you what I thought was the relevant page. It was further requested to send the entire Northeast Charter document, which I sent. And the proposal for Northeast Charter was, the base cost was $702,000. Extra services, which is primarily special education, was $50,000. Fuel, and again, this is hard to do. This is because we don't know what the status is with our electric buses. So fuel can be interpreted as diesel and/or increased as electricity. It's a little hard right now because we don't have that. The actual fuel costs that we've incurred this year, as of May 31st, report was $46,827.60. Athletic trips, we took a look at what was budgeted in Article Four. Should have been in Article Eight. That's $63,000. And then co-curricular trips is $8,000. If you add that all up, then Northeast Charter's bid would have been about $870,000. Our proposal is $821,000. Oh, you know, quarter, $48,000 less. I also want to point out, and this is a little inflated because we bought a couple of extra buses out of there, but we also added some money back into Article Eight. At this point, we've expended $855,000 in this budget. So the budget we're requesting next year is less than what we've actually expended this year. And I know it sticks out on the, you know, on this sheet because it's, it's, it's over, you know, $232,000. I'm sorry, yes, it's over $232,000. And, or it's up $232,000. But it's still less, almost $50,000 less than the proposal. Not, I mean, we're not going with, with that. We just got our bus fleet. We're certainly not going to go back to that. So that was requested, it was provided. So I guess at this point, I would turn it over to the board and/or the board first and then any other questions or comments regarding this budget. I can tell you, having conversations with Anthony, they were, there is hope that we can get a budget approved tonight. And then the council is either going to have a special meeting. I don't really want to, but they will have a meeting. We have to begin the process again. So the council will then have to consider the vote. Whatever you vote on tonight, if it's approved, and then move that forward to a budget validation.
Thank you, Jeff. Does the board have any questions? Ivy?
Yeah, I have reached out and asked for some information. All I got was, one of the things I had requested was the entire Northeast Charter proposal, which I did receive. I didn't receive any of the other information or a communication as to what could have been provided, what could not have been provided. So that was concerning because a lot of it was a lot of similarities to what I had reached out and asked for a little while back. So again, I didn't have anything and I didn't get that proposal until yesterday. So it's really hard to go over things when you don't have all the information on the lines. And then one of the things I want to point out is that, I know that Keith said that we would have paid a lot of money to Northeast, but I think people might be forgetting the fact that we had sold them our school buses. And what we were paying them was a reflection of what they were, they owed us for the school buses that we purchased. So of course, it looks like a whole amount. So I pulled up, let's see, close. So I went looking for the paperwork and I found on one of the budget articles from, it's from, of course, I can't see the, not Texas A. But like it said, Article Eight. So I think this was 2021, April 7, 2021 is the date this thing that was written up. And it says Article Eight, transportation. Transportation is down significantly. 1,200, 100, 1,205,385, or 17.84%. This is due to the decision to sell the school bus fleet. I am greatly concerned that this will become a huge increase in a couple of years when savings from the sale is finalized. However, we will have to deal with this in reality when it happens. So that explains why Northeast had a larger proposal coming back is because that had dissolved. So now they no longer owe us the money from purchasing the buses. So there's a lot of concerns that I have in this budget line and not having information. When cuts need to be made, this wasn't even looked at. And up until the vote, we still didn't have any information provided because Josh still didn't have the numbers yet because they were still working with Bernice to get that information. And then asking for information, never received it. Now asking again, when we had to come back to vote on this, not receiving all the information. It's, it's really hard to do our job when we're supposed to be part of the budget. We're supposed to know more than just the bottom baseline. And hand it, say, here, school board, this is what you need to do. Yes, I am grateful that the administrators work really hard. They do, you know, but there's some way or a disconnect and I can't be comfortable approving a budget when we're cutting vital school positions. You know, our students need more, our teachers need more support. And, you know, and the more we cut from there and we're not looking at budget lines like this that can be more cut and then information not being, you know, totally shared or maybe not remembered, it's concerning, you know, especially the impact to our towns. Our families are suffering, you know, everybody's impacted by the inflation. Everybody's struggling to get by. And I don't feel comfortable burdening the community anymore and then taking away from our students at the same time, especially when we've got children coming in that have more learning challenges and that need that assistance. So I'm just, I'm just not comfortable.
Ivy, Jim, will you speak to the?
Yeah, I said, I have the email right here. Did you receive the email as well?
Yeah, I did. Did you receive it?
It's actually the information. I don't know why it hasn't come through. I know you had issues with your laptop earlier today, but that's.
So somebody has gone into my school email account and deleted emails. So I have that all logged and registered. I was then sent a thing in the mail and then I was locked out of my account intentionally. So I don't know what, what's playing, but when I reached out on Monday for information, one, I don't think getting it the day before, you know, was enough time to even go through things. And then saying that something was sent to me, it's, it's really concerning. But it's concerning that somebody went into my personal email account for the school and deleted emails.
Do you have an email sent Monday, June 10th at 1:19?
That's right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's when the request came for this. And then I talked to you about it and I sent, I sent the request and I sent it to everybody. I'm not going to send information about the budget to one or two members.
So it was today at 3:00?
Yeah, so. So all that came from Jim?
When was the last, what was the last?
Yesterday.
Okay, so she.
And it's CC'd all of us and it was just the full contract. No information, no, hey, this is what I can't share, this is what I can't share, no discussion, no nothing.
So I just want to.
And then before that is nothing else.
We can talk about this all. I have no idea. I'm not sure that I like the accusation that anybody has tampered with your email. I know that's not true. But the, I want to talk more, I thought what you just read really makes our point. And I was saying several years ago that we were going to, we were stopped, going to stop getting the credit from Northeast Charter for selling the buses and that we would have a big increase to the budget. And that's exactly what's happened. They, yes, they're, I don't, I got the sense from the day I was hired, four years ago, that people were not happy that our buses got sold. The board at that time, which didn't include any of you, felt that they were not fully aware those buses were going to be sold and were not happy with that because it was going to adversely affect the ability for us to, to have any sense of control. I'm not personally opposed to contracting. We've looked at it in other places where I've been. But in that situation, by taking the buses out of our hands, it took, it took any control, any leverage out of it. So I was pretty much told when I was hired to go about the process of getting buses back. And we did. And we now have, and certainly thanks to the work of Josh, we have a viable fleet and a new viable fleet. So I think our oldest bus is three years old, three years old right now. So we have five brand-new buses and a couple of used and three used, right? So, and then we have the four electric, which is the topic for a different day. We're talking about budgets today, so we're not going to talk about that. So I don't, I'm looking at this and saying, I'm not sure. I keep, I keep, and I was asking Alicia when we met, I'm not sure what additional information is needed because I think the bottom line is we're still less than what we would have been if we stayed with Northeast Charter. And more importantly to me, Josh and I talked about this briefly, briefly the other day, last year, and Joel's here too, so he can certainly speak to this. I don't know how many trips we missed because Northeast Charter couldn't provide drivers for us. And so we had to cancel or reschedule trips. This year, we have missed zero, zero trips. Our service is better, it costs less money. I, you can vote your conscience, but I think at the end of the day, it's just, it's really frustrating. It's one of the things that, did get some feedback from the council is that it's, it's a bad look that we vote three to two on a budget that is, is pretty tight. I'm not sure, and there were no positions that were cut out of this budget, by the way.
Ivy?
Well, I do know that last year as being a bus driver, a lot of our bus drivers that were on refused to take certain jobs. And I remember following, Josh calling me on a whim to go up to the Coney High School to pick up our entire track team because they were left there. So, I mean, I have covered because there's people on our, on our, on our bus staff at the time that refused to do jobs, refused to work any more than they had to because I've covered a lot of their jobs and helping out. So some of that is kind of incorrect that people weren't always offered.
What's incorrect? That's last year, that was under Northeast Charter. They didn't provide for the trip.
I was just sharing information to kind of clarify some of the stuff from last year.
We need to stay focused.
Point of war. Thank you for covering. We do need to stay on topic. I also have a question, if you don't mind, Tim. Going back to the teacher salaries, are we losing that buffer that we had? I know we have a tight budget and I know that that's kind of a buffer between, you know, the, we have a, teachers were coming in, where they were, they don't have the same salary. And then we have, you know, some who retired with a higher salary. I guess I, I thought that was more kind of a buffer that we had. Do we have something else that can kind of protect us if we go over?
Well, that was my, when we, when we initially made a decision to go in a different direction, that's exactly it. We don't, we definitely have cut into that buffer, for lack of a better term. And so the budget, which is already tight, is now tighter. But it's, you know, I mean, it's also, if you want to think about it that way, it's actually more reflective of actual costs. So we know, we didn't know what the, the numbers were before. Now we know. We couldn't have known before. I, I can't say that enough. We proposed a budget. When you approved it, we hadn't hired anybody. We knew people were retiring, but you don't, you don't automatically just cut those salaries because you don't know, I don't want to tie my administrative hands. I want them to hire the best person possible. So they, they've done that. So I guess it directly enters, yes, it makes our budget that much more tighter. But I would also say that also makes it that much more accurate.
Thank you. Monica?
Yes, so am I correct in saying that you've cut the $90,000, okay, through, the savings was realized with lower salaries for less experienced teachers?
Yes.
So I appreciate your work, capa in this. I hate that it had to take until after the 11th hour. I mean, the budget was, was, you know, passed by, by part of the board, and we didn't get all of this detail. I just got it now. Like Ivy said, she got the, just got the transportation information. Why couldn't we have had this upfront? And furthermore, I believe that a member of the board needs to be at these 18 meetings when these kinds of decisions are being made. We need to know. We are asking our community, our residents, to show their costs and we need to know exactly what they are, not some general category, you know, general expenditures, 383. We don't know because it's not safe. So going forward, I think we really need to change the rate that that has done for future budgets.
I think just from my understanding, we didn't have numbers come in. So these are kind of, maybe you can speak to this. We had, we were waiting on some numbers. And that's what needs to change from when we gave, when Jim gave the town council the initial budget, things are kind of revolving. At least that's my understanding.
Well, again, we can, I'm with Tim. I think we need to, we need to move forward. I can, I own, I, first of all, I'm going to do this with the council. I'll do it with you. There were some numbers that were changed after because the bottom line wasn't acceptable. And you vote on, as a, as a board, you vote on the, all the expenditure articles. That's what you approve. You don't, you don't vote on the revenue. The revenue is the revenue. It's the money that comes in. We don't say, oh, we'll accept that, we don't accept that. Ultimately, the taxpayers do get to say whether they accept it because in order to get the state money, we have to raise a certain amount locally. And that's why I have to calculate, and it's how one of the first hiccups, I guess, was discovered is that in looking at the most updated 279, I discovered that we had $191,000. I reported that back to you, but you didn't vote on it because you don't vote on it. That's additional revenue and people are happy, I think, that we found 190, whatever, $1,000. And then subsequently, when I did, finally got a chance to talk to Bernice, we made the change in school nutrition. That's a little bit irrelevant tonight, but it, but it's one of the things that was a bad look. I accept ownership for all of that. So I, I, I just do. So we, you know, we felt in, in talking to Bernice that the school nutrition program did not need to get any more, any support from the community for this year to be, to stay viable as an enterprise account. So again, that was reported to the board, but not, it's not anything you would act on because it's a, it's a revenue. Actually, it's a reduced revenue type of thing. But it improved the bottom line. So I don't know, I'm, I'm a little frustrated in that we started with a budget that was going to cost the taxpayers over 17% and now we're down to 3.70. And I, I'm looking at those numbers I was talking about that, you know, we have four things in particular that if you put them together, add up to over $840,000 of increases, yet our impact to the, to the taxpayers is $284,000. I can't imagine working in a system where a member of the board comes to administrative team meetings and stuff, but that's out of my purview. So I'm going to leave that alone.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm sorry, I apologize because I just gave you that packet today. And as far as the email, I did tell Jim to use his discretion, just for everyone to know, as far as the things that were requested, just because there was something that he had categorized as non-budget related. But it looks like Ivy didn't get this email, so it would be nice for.
I don't know why it's here.
Well, sure, but I think she has issues with, she had sat down with IT today?
No, my email worked fine up until today when a certain email came in and then I was locked out of my account and had to come and get it all fixed. But my email was fine before that.
Okay. So I think we should send that over?
Well, I think the person who's been dealing with that is Cam. And I think there was a, some, but at some setting, you explained it to me today too.
Yeah, confidential mode. I had to turn that on so that you could access that email.
And I was just not being able to access a confidential email. But everything else, anything he would send or any other board member, I would get, I have no problem obtaining.
But you didn't get the one?
So I've resent that one just so you know, but.
Thank you for turning that. Is there any other questions from the board?
Can I make a comment, please?
Sure.
I'm going to be honest and very frustrated. We have, we have a very low budget, a very nice budget that tons of people were a bit hard on. We are still probably going to be the lowest per pupil in our area and we're still fighting about cutting. This makes no sense. I don't understand what's going on with this transportation. It doesn't, it doesn't feel right to me. It's like something else going on. This is a solid budget. Josh has done a good job, Jim's done a good job, and this is confusing to me and I'm not liking it at all. This just makes no sense.
Thank you, Tim. And Ivy?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment first before I ask my question about something. The fact that people are making comments that, alluding to stuff that's not factual is, is, is kind of a bit inappropriate and unprofessional as a board member to display in public. When it comes to the budget, these are important. When it feels like there's a lack of transparency in providing information for us to have a better understanding of what we're voting on, that's something valid. That's protecting our schools, that's protecting our community, and that's protecting the funds that are being moved around. I don't know why it's so hard to get any information on this line. It has nothing to do with anything. The fact that, what my concern was is that our administrators work really hard. They cut some vital stuff from our schools when we have the most largest budget line that we're requesting, well, one of them, and nothing was touched there. We didn't get information. And then it was so hard to simply be able to get information. I shouldn't have to ask several times. It shouldn't go there, you know? And the questions I ask all pertain to the budget. Like one of my questions, so if, if we have a budget line, so I know transportation to and from school in the mornings, that's part of this transportation line. But now I do know that when the schools hire the bus for, for like sports or a special trip or anything like that, that fund comes from the school's budgets. So, so if we're, if we're charging the schools for that money, where is that money being deposited into? And why are we still asking for all this money here if the schools are paying for those extracurricular activities out of their own budgets? So this, that's concerning. I'm saying just not being able to get that simple answer or any answers before, which are all based on budget, to be able to understand this budget line so that I can maybe make a recommendation saying, hey, you know what? We really need these teachers' positions. Our teachers are, you know, stretched out as it is. They're exhausted from the whole impacts of COVID and everything that was placed on them. They're trying to get these kids back to where they need to be. So why are we taken from a vital area when this transportation line can be looked at? And why is it such a fight that every time we ask for information on it, we get accusatory statements that there's something going on, we're being harassed, or we're being ignorant, or we're being angry or ridiculous? That, that's like inappropriate. If we're supposed to be working as a team, then how hard is it to give that information? If we're supposed to be working as a team, then how hard is it to give that information? So it just doesn't make sense that, you know, our schools are cutting their budgets even more by paying for these extracurricular activities, which does impact our students because hands-on is better education for our kids. So their hands are tied to be able to give our kids more. The, the sports teams are trying hard to raise extra funds to be able to pay for these trips, but yet we're asking for more money and the money doesn't even come from that line?
So I, I think it's not listening to the explanations. You've been given all of this information. And Joel can explain it, Josh can explain it, I can explain it, and probably any member of the administrative team can explain it. This is no different. Now that we have our own transportation system back here, this is the way the state tells us to put together our budgets. Things that, to and from school is clearly an Article 8 expenditure. So when you look at what I provided to you about the expenses, the athletic, these things here, the fuel, the athletic trips, the co-curricular, not the fuel, the athletic trips, co-curricular trips, those are all in the, in the school lines because that's where they are supposed to be this year. No, I'm not even going to go there. But that, that's still, it may come from the school, the individual schools, but it goes to Northeast Shutter. So that's why it got added to this total here. And that's the way it works in any other district that has their own transportation system that the state says, through the, what they tell us we have to do in terms of budgeting, that this money goes in this article, this money goes in this article. That's what we've done. There's, there's no lack of transparency, it's all in here.
So...
I think we're going to move on. Did you have a specific?
No, because if it's that simple, then why wasn't it just easy to sit down in the beginning, know that we had questions prior to, just to go over this so that we could get to this point today and just make the decision and move it forward? But the fact that we haven't been provided since months back, it, or, or how simple just to sit down and meet with us one-on-one and, hey, let's go over it together, get our understanding so that we can be supportive and come to this meeting. But to not provide it, and then now we have to bring it to open meeting, that, hey, we didn't get the information that, that Jim said is so simply to provide, then why not just sit with us and have that instead of creating this orchestra in our school board meeting?
Thank you, Ivy.
Yes, I have to say, I like this, I like this latest budget. It's nice and it's tight and, and it's just fully responsible. To me, I don't understand why it took us so long to get here. I have to echo what Ivy's saying and voice my frustration about the lack of transparency ongoing and a pattern of obfuscation that I don't understand. Obfuscation, obfuscation.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, let's go ahead and close our discussion for our budget.
Well, we don't have, we have to come to a agreement on a number or something.
I thought we were going to throw down this, this right here, the one that you just gave us.
You are, but the, the motion on the agenda, it says...
Is it blank?
Well, it's not blank, it says, I don't know.
It's four point, it's set in 4.1.
Yeah, discussion of the board, sorry, to approve the FY25, it's set in 4.1. The discussion is in 4.1, so if you're asking me, I would say, if the number I'd be looking for you to vote on is 13 million, 452 dollars, sorry, 13 million, 452,389 dollars and it's, we're in the middle of the page, if you're looking at this sheet here. Used to be able to read upside down, it's not so well anymore. And, and if that feels a little bit weird, remember that the council has already approved the adult ed budget and the school nutrition budget. So you're, you're voting on the part that was voted down, which is the first 11 articles.
Okay. Well, entertain a motion to approve the FY25 budget as set in 4.1, which is 13 million, 452,389 dollars.
So move.
Second, vote second. Aldo's in favor? And do we have...
Catherine has a yes.
So that is four, zero?
Or one. No, I'm sorry, four, zero.
Of course, I'm sorry. And then is that a no or a no?
So it is four, one.
And then we have, yes, four, one, and then we have Joseph. All right, we'll move on to discussion of the school board meeting scheduled for June 19th. That's for Juneteenth. We had talked about this replacing that meeting at one point last meeting.
Yeah, I think we need to. We have had, we haven't had a chance to, we haven't had a request for an executive session, which may or may not need to happen, but even if we don't do that, we, this is really good news. The, my understanding is that the teachers are voting on the contract tomorrow. If they, if they approve the contract, we really need to vote on it before the end of the month so that we can issue the new contracts moving forward. So what I usually do as part of that process is I will, I'll give you a sheet of the highlights of the changes and the sort of the whatever, send that out to you and then we can vote on that.
So, just a quick question. So just to understand how that's going to affect the budget. So is that already kind of calculated into here, like roughly?
Roughly, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to, because if we pass, if this passes and then that gets approved, how's that going to impact?
I had a, I don't want to share this, I had a, middle of the night, sit up and say, oh my God. I was thinking about this, and I'm thinking about the work that we did to get, to get all that money and have not have the big request. I, I emailed, I had it at like six o'clock, she gets in at six o'clock. I emailed her at six o'clock in the morning. Are you sure those three teachers got into the budget? She wrote back very quickly, yes, they are. So I was like, oh, phew, that would be, that would be really bad.
So...
So I, I did some checking. We can, well, we don't, actually, I just had, I just had a epiphany in my own mind. Just give me a second. I'm thinking that we don't necessarily need to, we can wait and see when our first meeting is, when our meeting is in July. Because we don't actually issue the new contracts? No, we have to, we have to approve that because we have people that we hired, people that we hired that are at the bottom of the stack, we know what that number is, but people who, we didn't hire, everybody was brand new. So we have a number of people who we don't know what their salary and we can't determine what that is until you approve the contract. So it really does need to be...
The school board meeting in July is the 17th.
Yep, I just saw that too. So I, I did have Colin look today, unlike tonight where the, the planning board, I think, is meeting. We could be in the APR, which is a little more comfortable for us. Then next Thursday, the 20th, if people can make that meeting, that would be, we could be in the APR.
How's the board feeling? It would be Thursday? Thursday?
The 20th.
The 20th.
And I just want to reiterate, particularly for, for the public and, you know, the recording, that the, we talked to the school management and asked about whether it's appropriate or not appropriate, whether it's illegal was the question to me on Juneteenth. And the answer is no, it's not. There are a lot of businesses that are open. We could have met then, but they really felt that it would be a really bad idea, a bad look for the school system, it would be really disrespectful. And I would, I would agree with that wholeheartedly. So I think moving into the 20th if we can would be the best decision.
I would take a straw vote on those in favor of moving the school board meeting from Wednesday to Thursday next week?
So four, you can make a bid. Catherine, I can't really see her right now. Although, I'll try to be right there. I did see your hand up. Catherine, will that work for you? She's not sure, but four of you can make it, so that's good.
No, no, I will not, I'll, I'll be able to attend remotely.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Poppy. Okay, moving on to our next item of business, under new business, the discussion of the delegate assembly for the main school management fall conference. I did receive some feedback or interest from Monica, she was thinking about going. I'm fine with that. I attended last year, I think Catherine had attended the year prior, and so I certainly don't mind. I do believe if you attend the delegate assembly, that it's expected that you also attend the fall conference as well.
Yeah, I'd be interested as well.
Okay. And what was that?
I was sure, I thought I had the dates in here, but I don't have the dates.
Oh, I did, I gave them last time, but I don't think I brought the information this time. Yeah, October 24th, 24th, actually, I do have the dates. The actual delegate assembly is on the 19th at 9:30. It lasts until about noon or one, depending, it's all Zoom. And so that's when kind of people, all, all representatives from different school boards around the state will gather and talk about the different issues that are being proposed, policy type of things. So you'll attend that via Zoom. And then there will be, in October, the main school management conference, the 51st annual conference, I believe, is the 24th, it's a Thursday, and the 25th, a Friday.
October.
Of October, yes. So the delegate assembly is on that Saturday prior to the conference. And they have a lot of really great lessons that you can kind of sign up for depending on what your interest is.
So the delegate assembly is what month is that full?
October, so it's...
October 19th?
October 19th and then the 24th, 25th. And the 24th and 25th, yep. So it is a time commitment and the, the 24th and 25th are full days of being at the civic center. They have a lot of great information and...
So I might hear Monica would be the delegate assembly member, you'd be the alternate.
So, okay?
Can I interrupt you guys real quick? You had a question pop up, you just...
Yeah, I don't know.
You just moved a little quick before I could say anything.
Can you just scroll down?
It's from Shannon.
Yep, Shannon wanted to know, said that the council already voted on the student nutrition, adult ed, but those numbers were different than what was, what the school board voted on on April 24th. But again, you didn't, the, the numbers for the budget hasn't changed. What changed was the revenues. So I, you can vote on them again if you want, but the numbers themselves are not, are what, what you have on the sheet now, so...
Right. We're voting on expenditures.
Right.
Okay, well, I think we figured that out. Open it up to any public comment, whether in the room or on Zoom.
Oh, Megan White has a public comment.
Go ahead, Megan.
Hi, Megan White, I'm the Director of Teaching and Learning. I just wanted to remind the board and the community that we do have a survey out for parents to complete and give us some feedback. We're really excited, we had some great engagement in that survey. I just want to make it very clear, I don't think that I publicized all of the surveys that we gave out. The staff, the student, and the family surveys are all going to be closed this Friday evening. So if there's anyone else, that gives us a two-week window to collect data and it will give me enough time to compile it so that we're able to do some things with that. So I just want to make folks aware that we're going to be closing that up this Friday evening.
Thank you, Megan. Thanks for mentioning that. Please, Mark.
I want to make sure that families who do not have internet access, I know we have families who do not have internet access, that they have the opportunity to complete a survey on papers, is that the case?
If there's any requests made to the central office for paper-based copies, I'm more than happy to make them available to folks. I don't have a draft of that right now, but as the need arises, I'm happy to print that out right from Google Document.
Thank you, Megan. Any other public comment? Seeing that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section. Are there any school board comments?
I do have a couple comments. Number one, this is my fourth year here, this last six months have been stressful. There's, there's a lot of bullying and types of things that are happening in this board that are okay. Number two, I have three kids at home, I'm the only adult. My kid texts me, I'm going to answer. I have no idea how long I'm going to be here for. So if anybody else has a problem, I'm going to answer my kids, I'm the only adult with them, so.
I think it's really upsetting that the board is attacking the board. I mean, these comments should be brought to the, the chair so that they could be addressed that way.
Thank you. Any other board comment? Oh, yes.
Just from an outside perspective looking in, I think it's, it's going both ways. It's not just one side, there's, there's a lot of, it's very, very clear split down the middle. And while I have my personal beliefs that I side with, I think it's just, it's gotten out of hand and it's, I don't know, it's disheartening to see, but I'm just glad we made progress on the budget today. Boys lacrosse has qualified to play in the state championship game. Girls have the Class C final today, girls lacrosse, it didn't get ranked out. And we had, I believe, four athletes qualified to run in Benuego State Major Track.
Thank you very much, Joseph.
So girls was today?
I believe it should be today.
Do you know yet?
Can we answer this, the student question?
What is, what is the response percentage that would allow confidence in the data in the survey?
That was like a mega question.
Yeah. Steve, I don't know that answer off the top of my head. You can certainly send that on to Megan, who's joining us via Zoom today.
Right, seeing...
I know.
Go ahead. Megan?
I'm sorry, I was unclear if I was invited to respond or not.
Yes.
If you know the answer, that'd be great.
Well, I haven't, I haven't calculated a confidence interval, and we're talking about a confidence interval, which is like a statistical measurement. But from the PBIS culture survey, they said if you receive over 100 participants in each of the surveys, that you can consider it valid. And that was from, right from the packet. I'm happy to share the PBIS survey of the validity information with anyone who's interested. At this point, we have over, we had over 100 participants as of our last board meeting Wednesday, so I think we're at 140, maybe even a little bit more right now. So we had a great participation from families, we have over 300 students who participated, and the staff is getting close to 70 or 80. It will be hard to get to 100 of that. That would be essentially every administrator and tech and teacher participating, which would be probably too high of a percentage to assume. But we are right in line with getting some valid information and I appreciate folks taking it seriously.
Thank you so much, Megan, I appreciate that. Hope that answers your question, Stephen. Okay. We'll go ahead and close the school board comments. There's no executive session this evening, so without objection, the, I'll bring this meeting to a conclusion at 6:47.